We've got a fairly brief meeting this morning, but some important reports. And then also beginning our planning for next year as we think about some of our task forces and other things. We start out, we have three co-op evaluation summaries. We've seen these the last few months, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Hernandez to walk us through these.
Try to make sure I do the mic right. Good. So Mike Hernandez, Office of Coordinated Sport and Service. Very happy to be in front of you guys. These are the final three co-ops of the 15 co-op tour. And so it was a huge endeavor, and I can't say thank you enough to the teams that were part of that collective five that went across to every co-op. In addition to that, the four local people that helped serve on all the committees. Was very much a learning experience. If you recall from our first one, that the process that this undertook is we, even though we were doing evaluations in the 17, 18 school year, we were implementing a new rubric process that was part developed by co-op folks along with ADE staff. But we were focused in on the 16, 17 school year only. And that's because in developing that, they knew that the things they needed to do were based on that 16, 17 school year. So even though it's a five-year evaluation, we were looking at one year. We've had, you know, overall results that you've been seeing. These final three, that I'm going to take a little bit of time and go through these evaluations today, because if you've noticed in these three, they're a little bit different than the other ones we've seen. And I want to say a little bit about how that, those reports are structured. Some of the things that, the way that it works in the rubric, we kind of make it akin to standards for accreditation, when they're, all the things that are in that rubric are things that are required. And so when one thing is not done, you could liken that to kind of like a probationary violation type deal where say, hey, there's an issue here that we've got to get better at. And so that's the mindset that we bring to this. So I kind of want to walk you through that, and I'll show you an example from each of the three co-ops. The common theme was around the user satisfaction survey. And so this was developed in working with Dr. Arora and trying to develop an evaluation that, you know, instead of taking kind of the anecdotal, hey, we're doing okay, we're satisfied with the co-ops, trying to get more data. So as you're getting your needs assessment in from your member districts, you're able to see, okay, these are what the needs are, and this is kind of that match. So based on all the categories of things that we provide and services, this is how we feel we're satisfied or not satisfied with a particular area. So it lets the co-op know with data to say, hey, we're really struggling in this particular area we need to get better at. And so as we went through these evaluations, you know, all along, we saw that both in user satisfaction and in needs assessment, the scores probably weren't as many people responding as we thought we needed to. And so, you know, as a committee, we really grappled with, what is that threshold of, you know, what number of responses should you get to make in a valid score? And so in this particular one, this is kind of the example of the rubric. One of the things, because this is the first year we've gone through and said, okay, what are some of the things we need to change? And so if you're looking at 22.2 annual user satisfaction survey, that first line, that column one should actually read 59% or lower. It doesn't make sense to be 50 to 59% or greater. So that's one of those things we've got to correct in the next cycle. And so as we were looking at responses, the committee felt in all cases that there wasn't enough answers to be able to answer these. And these are both for Arkansas River, Guy Finner, Crowley's Ridge, where the number of respondents in all three cases were less than 1% of their certified teachers. And so we saw things like five responses, or nine responses, or 25 responses. And so even though the numbers, and I'll kind of show you this next example, what we were looking at were these kinds of things. As we would see the actual aggregate results, when you look at all of the different areas of service, you know, trying to determine, you know, how are these co-ops doing in these different service areas? And so you can see in some cases, we didn't get any responses, or we got one. And so even though the aggregate of that information would come out to say 100% or 90%, the committee could, would never really got comfortable saying, this is a true reflection of user satisfaction. We will say that in all three cases, that at the time we did these evaluations, they had results for the 17, 18 school year, knowing that, hey, they really have done a great job of getting those better. There was some discussion, and, you know, every co-op had their different set of circumstances. You know, in one particular case, there was a different group that was in charge for an interim period, and, you know, a lot of things weren't done like they should have been, and they've gone leaps and bounds above of what they, they're doing this year to get better. And so that's kind of the mindset and the approach that the committee took in looking at these things to say, you know, hey, this really isn't what we're talking about when we're trying to measure user satisfaction. And trying to get to more of a data-based approach in doing so. The third thing we have here, and this is what, you know, so most of the co-ops, you know, kind of understood and said, okay, we do see that we need to get the number of user satisfaction survey results up, and we need to have a larger discussion that if we're not getting lots of answers on this, is this really a good tool for us to use moving forward? And how do we do a better job of gaining that user satisfaction in not just an anecdotal way, but a way of saying, you know, we need data to make those kinds of decisions on a consistent basis. In our rubric, towards the end of it, you'll notice that this is how, kind of akin to standards of accreditation. When you look at the way the category levels are set up, is that it says that if you have a score of one or more, which in most cases, all the co-ops had fours and fives or better in all other categories, which they are great co-ops, they do a good job, and it's just in this one particular case, because they got a one, that gave their overall rating as a one. And so the effect of that is that we'll have to go back in and do an evaluation in the next cycle with these particular co-ops in a row. We do have representatives here from the co-ops if there are questions, or if there are questions for me. You know, I know this, this sounds like it's a, I know it's negative, feels negative for them because they got this one where they have lots of other high scores in other areas. And, you know, it's one of those, it's just about getting better. And it's not necessarily an indictment of the overall co-op and how they're performing, it's just in this particular area, there are some things that need to get better, and they have. They have done a better job where they're getting thousands of responses in now, and some of those things like that. So we know we're going to see a better turnaround in the next cycle. But questions, comments?
Yeah, if I can weigh in, really, Dr. Hernandez covered what I was going to cover just in my comments about it. And if y'all, those of you who've been on the board a while, you remember what the old co-op evaluations used to be. And really, they were, you know, they, they really didn't drive us to get better. It was really a compliance thing. You know, we just kind of checked the boxes, we did it on the cycle, and everything's fine. And the feedback from the board in the first year or so that I was here was really about, hey, we need to take a look at this. And it wasn't just the board, other stakeholders, legislators had asked questions before. So we created this new system to really give us the opportunity and reflection of what can we do to get better. So the first, all the other co-op evaluations you've seen so far, you know, showed something drastically different. And what I've tried to convey to our partners there at the co-ops is that, you know, nobody is using this to be a black mark against the co-op. The tool met its intended purpose, which is identify something where we can get better. Now, it also served the purpose of showing us what are the issues with the new system. It's brand new, this is our first time out with it. So what can be, you know, realigned, you know, if there's anything in here in the rubric that needs to be adjusted, and we have found some of those things also. So I just, with our co-op folks in the audience, I want them to hear me tell you, one, without the co-ops, we would be hurting as a state because they do so much in support of our, of our schools and our teachers around the state. Two, with that, with that value that they provide to us and to the schools, we all know that we can get better. This is something we've identified that will help us get better on our end and on their end. So I wouldn't want anybody to take away from today that there is a problem or anything like that in our co-ops, because it's not actually. As Dr. Hernandez said, everything else you look at in those scores is very, very positive. We're going to, and we already have worked with them to make sure that feedback systems are in place, and we expect that next year, you won't see these same results because what we know has already transpired with our co-ops.
Ms. Chambers.
Just to build on a couple of things that the commissioner said, I do think when you have a startup survey, there's as much noise in the scoring that's related to the method and communication and all that. But the other thing I wanted to applaud on this front side and underscore is not getting back to a check the box. Sometimes too, over a period of time when there's a lot of pressure, well, it can go one of two ways, there's pressure to get a certain score. So folks check the box, or they feel like no change is going to happen anyway, and it can get kind of, there's an apathy. It's like, whatever, I'll just fill this out. And so it's a good thing to have, you know, truly authentic insight into what's working and what's not working. And we need, we have a responsibility, even at the board level, to make sure we continue to contribute to an environment that wants that kind of information. And some of it'll be good, and some of it won't be so good, and we're going to work on it together.
That actually relates to one of my questions. So in terms of the delivery method of the survey to the respondents, is that via email? Is that the primary?
So I know it varied from co-op to co-op, but yes, it went over electronic, or they posted on their website and notified, hey, this, this survey's available. And in some cases, you know, you know, as far as it making out to the schools on a large level, that may not have happened as well. I know that there was, in one particular case, there was kind of a timing issue of, you know, when it, when it was sent out, and then it was locked up after a certain time. So if they really didn't, weren't engaged in that time window when that was available, you know, that, that may have posed a problem for that, for that particular, that particular co-op. And so, but overall, across the state, you know, there were a large amount of responses when they all had basically the same survey in the same window. But I think that was the first year of the survey also, and they've had a chance to get that. That's why they're seeing a lot more responses, you know, this year, and making sure that it's getting out there and being advertised.
Yeah, and I do think for, you know, apples to apples comparisons across co-ops, I think, you know, getting the delivery method for the survey consistent is, is really, really important so that we can really know. I do think it, it leads me to, you know, a couple of questions though. I mean, if there are low, continually low response rates, you know, that signals to me, co-ops that aren't as relevant in, in teachers' lives. I mean, that's the, if I get an email survey, and it's something that's just not very important to me, that's, that's going to be a delete, where if it is something that is part of my, you know, ongoing life, I'm going to take that time and do. So, so I think that would also be an interesting question, once we, after a couple of years, if we are still continuing to see these gaps in, in who's actually responding. And I think we, and I like the sensitivity to response rates, but I think we need to maybe follow up and try to figure out why the low response rates, if they persist.
And I, you know, can probably speak a little to that, is that, you know, being in a co-op, in a couple of different co-ops, and what some of the responses have been back from our co-ops that were evaluated, is that, you know, they're getting these responses sometimes in other methods outside of this survey. And it may be more face-to-face because they see their members quite frequently, which is a good thing. But at the same time, you know, making sure that they, they move along, all of us as we try to move in the state of being more data-driven and having things that are evidenced to say, hey, you know, this is what the data says, this is what we're hearing, but this is what the data says. Trying to move more to that mindset, I think that's becoming clear to everybody. That's why we're seeing more response rates in this year, and people being, ensuring that they're getting that information out. Because, you know, I understand that, it's like, hey, they're telling us they're satisfied, but is that everybody within the schools? As the rubric and the rule outline, is it's all educators in that co-op that should be responding? And we know we're not going to get 100%, but we need to hear from all of them, because if some of them aren't being served, or don't feel like it's relevant to them, then, you know, we're going to be taking care of the small subset of folks. And that's what we, we want to try to make sure, taking care of all educators.
Thanks. Ms. Newton?
Can I add just a teacher viewpoint of that for just a second? Whenever I would always get those surveys, they would usually come in the spring, when, as a teacher, I'm starting to get tired. Also, it's testing season, and I've got all this stuff that's, as a teacher, you know, my desk is piled up with papers and things to grade, and kids are getting tired, and I'm trying to motivate them, do lesson plans. And a co-op survey probably goes to the bottom of my list of things to do. And so, and co-op is not really on my mind yet because I haven't made that switch to summer getting ready. And so just, just something to think about. We, we have a statewide system of registration for teacher, for, for the PD. Whenever you sign up for, for PD in this, at the co-ops or whatever, you go through this data system to sign up for the professional development. Is there not some way that we could tie this survey to that system? You know, once a year, you fill out this survey for your particular co-op that you're in, and then that data automatically goes to, to your co-op? You know, if it was tied to that registration system, then every teacher knows that, well, it's time for me to, to do this, but I have to, I have to fill out this survey in April or May, or whenever y'all want it, to be able to, to sign up and continue to get my professional development hours.
I think that's, that's a great point about the timing of the year, and something that can be looked at. And I think that's something that I know the folks from here from the co-op will take it. But I will say that I know in going through these evaluations, what I've learned is that they try to get some of these results from the needs assessment and things like that in a certain time to where they see, okay, here's the, here's what the needs are.
I know what to do for summer.
Let's plan professional development for summer.
I understand that, yeah.
And then, you know, when the best timing, because if you go through an entire year of, that's when, towards the end of the year is when you decide if you're satisfied or you're not satisfied.
Right.
So I think that's all part of that discussion that needs to be had, is when is the best time to, to give these? And I think in the spring is where it's been settled, but maybe it needs to be reviewed, relooked at.
Any other questions?
No, I want to compliment, this is not at the expense of others that I haven't met, but I had an opportunity to meet Jennifer Hampton from the Guy Finner co-op, and she's really on fire as far as doing a lot of hands-on PD for dyslexia and the science of reading. And she presents herself well, she's obviously very knowledgeable. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity to compliment her. But I'd like to hear if the directors have anything in particular they would like to draw to our attention, or anything beyond what Dr. Hernandez said that you would like us to know or think about? If so, come to the podium, or if not, then just stay back there and grin.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
I'm Kathy Swan, I'm the new director at the Arkansas River Cooperative in Pamela. And I just brought some letters of support from our board. They went together and collectively wrote a letter and took the time to sign that. So I would be remiss if I did not at least supply that to you all. When I get back home, they'll, you know, kind of get on to me probably if their letter didn't make it. So I do want to give those to you before I leave, and just reassure you that, you use the phrase "on fire," and we use that phrase a lot at Arkansas River. Our staff is top-notch, and they all care about kids and care about the communities they serve. And we have such great momentum moving forward, that we did spend some time in this 2016-17, and it was a great learning experience for a new director and a new assistant director and teacher center coordinator. But what we were most focused on is moving forward. The momentum that the community and the board and all the staff and schools had in moving into 2017-18. So we had one foot in 16-17 and one foot in 17-18 going through this process, but I don't think I would change that because it was such a learning experience to go back, to take the time and go back and look to see what went well, and maybe some things that we need to do differently. So all of the recommendations that were made by the committee have already been addressed, and so I feel really good about that, and we're ready for them to come back for another evaluation. So if I could give these out?
Thank you. Congratulations on your response.
Super excited.
Good morning.
Well, Ms. Swan is there. I just want to say, I'm going to brag on her because, you know, we, we plucked Barbara Warren out of this co-op and asked her to go to Dollar Way. And then I think they had an interim, and then they identified Kathy, and Kathy has done such a great job of building on what Ms. Warren had started there, and really bringing new ideas. And we were down there this week earlier, visiting with her, and she's, she's got a good team. And I think we were, some of our folks were down there for some of the science of reading rise training also, and they're on fire for that too. So I just want to say, great job, we're proud of what you're doing down there, moving things along.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Roy Hester, I'm the director at the Guy Finner co-op. Appreciate the kind words about, we do have great staff. We've learned a lot through the process as well, as I told Mike and the commissioner both. I mean, we've been used to, over the years, as was mentioned earlier, we do a lot of face-to-face. We have great relationships with all of our schools, and I too have letters, each one of my superintendents wrote a letter of support. And that's kind of the way we've done business for years. I'm a third-year co-op director and just kind of was doing what we've always done, so to speak, and sometimes that gets us in trouble, is this case. We didn't, we didn't take, put a lot of credence, I guess, in the survey and the timing. I appreciate Ms. Newton bringing that out. Teachers are very busy at the end of the year. It was a short time window in which we took that survey, and for that, we didn't do a very good job. We have, and I do have this year's surveys too as well, if you want to look at those, we've got over 1,000 respondents this year. So we've, we've done a much better job of taking care of that. But at my place, I do, I have great staff, and they kind of took this personal. You know, they were, they felt like we, we do such a great job with our schools, and our schools feel like we do such a great job. And then to stumble over one thing, a survey, it just, it was a little disheartening at first. But as we look back upon it, we see, of course, it's an area which we can grow in, we can learn from it, we can do better. And for that, I always tell people, you know, many times we get down when bad things happen and things don't turn out like we want it to, but that's when we really learn and we really grow. And I think that's what this is going to turn out for us. It's going to be a learning experience, and it's going to be an opportunity for growth. And for that, I appreciate, I appreciate your time, appreciate you letting me come, and I'm going to share those letters with you as well. And if you want the results of our current survey, I'll pass those out as well. Thank you.
While Roy's finishing passing it out, I just want to say, Dr. Barth, I think this is an example of how, you know, there's still concern out there among school districts and some of our education stakeholders about that old compliance mentality mindset rather than continuous improvement. When you think about our ESA plan, and we've talked a lot about continuous improvement for schools, for districts, for the agency, for ADE itself, you know, co-ops are an integral part of, of the delivery system and support system. And I think, you know, Mr. Hester was right in saying that they took it personally, and I think some of that was fear of, one, fear of the unknown, how's this going to be perceived? And our communication has always been, look, it's a, it's an indicator for one period of time, for one element, that the way this was set up, it looks, it could look bad unless you have further conversations about how do we do, get better? How do we take the steps to get better? And where they talk about face-to-face, which I've been to their co-op, I've seen their, how their superintendents interact with each other, and it's about taking those types of interactions and systematizing them so that we can have, have a record of, you know, what does that feedback look like? What does it sound like? How's it helping them to get better? To, because they have different needs in western part of the state, Guy Finner co-op area, than what they have in, say, the southeast. So it's, it's about our relationship too, of trying to identify and help move things along in a positive way. So I hope through this process, one thing that happens is that it helps us grow trust too, that, you know, the department's not trying to whack anybody over the head figuratively on these types of evaluations, but it's truly how can we work together to, for all of us to get better?
Yeah, I think, you know, that's, that's a great point. And, yeah, I think that in the early years, it was a lot of checking in when, you know, co-ops are just such a crucial part of any of our innovation work. I mean, as Ms. Zook said, in terms of our reading initiatives, in terms of the rollout of the new state science standards, I mean, you name any of these kind of big changes in Arkansas education, and the co-ops are going to be a crucial piece because we are so limited in bandwidth in, in educational bureaucracy in Arkansas. This is where a lot of that action happens. And so it's really not any kind of, you know, check-in to, to try to punish. It's, it's really a question of, are we going to be able to create the kind of change in the state that we need to create because there's such a crucial piece of that?
I prefer to use the term "support network" rather than bureaucracy, Dr. Barth, but I understand what you're saying.
Sorry, I got my academic hat on there for a second, I apologize.
Since co-ops have given us what they believe and what you believe as far as not scoring as well as you'd hoped to, or as you thought you would, is an opportunity for growth, I wonder if we at State Board and ADE would find benefit in having the co-ops or a variety of superintendents give us feedback? Are, are they beginning to see us more as a support network and, and our availability as opposed to just compliance? So, you know, we might find an opportunity to think where we're doing something really well, but in fact, it's not translating. And it may be a lack of understanding, it may be that we're not doing it well. But, you know, just, just finding out what is, maybe at the end of this year, once ESA's gone, like, what, what helped, what could go better, those kind of things. Because we do want to, we know that good relationships can only benefit children. And that's in fact what we all want to do, and why these people have stayed in education as long as they have. And so it might be something, I don't know if that would be under your purview, or the commissioner could get Gina to do, I don't know, you know, but...
No, I think that, I think that's a great idea. I'm not sure, outside of ESA, if there's been a, because the surveys we did on ESA were very specific to developing the ESA plan, but...
But not only once they're transitioned...
Right, right.
Did we do a good job of rolling it out?
That's, exactly.
Is my child website helpful? Are the things we're doing helping you understand and do better and do a better job for kids? Or do you just feel overwhelmed, do you need more?
Right.
I don't know.
No, that's, so that's...
Dr. Barth is the person who can put together a poll.
Yeah, he could, he could help us develop polling questions.
I think if he can do a political one, he could probably do an educational one. But, you know, something along that line, and I don't know, it's just an idea.
I think that's a great, I think that's a great point, because we have been doing surveys, but they haven't been the, the broad, you know, how's the department working for you? How are we doing? And I think there may, there's some value for us to put something like that together. And I'm sure that some of our co-op friends would, you know, would be open to helping us develop the right kind of questions. We are doing some work with the co-ops on the systems of support. So there's work going on that is, is maybe a precursor to that, that next step. And so as we work through our working group, maybe we can bring that together and talk about how, what that would look like. So thank you for that.
Well, and I agree, I agree wholeheartedly with that, in terms of your earlier message about a trust... about a trust relationship, I mean, we ask a lot of other folks in terms of, in terms of what they're doing well. And, you know, trust is a two-way street. And, you know, as the, the new mission and vision of the department has been implemented, we knew, I think it is important to say, who, our stakeholders around the state, are we as a department and as an agency really doing what we need to do to make this happen?
And I think in that regard, and this may be a question for Ms. Smith, there's the people who are directly involved in the PD on the science of reading. But I know, I was involved in two different kinds of statewide rollouts, one when we trained special ed supervisors and one when we got into the program for effective teaching. So is there, are we having spot checks on the people that we've trained who are now trainers? So the message doesn't get blurred or, you know, because the way you get trained is the way you probably will implement. But if the trainer didn't get it exactly the way it was intended, is that in your department or is that Ms. Smith or?
That would probably be Ms. Smith.
And I guess there was a legislature...
You're talking about like a calibration, just making sure.
So, you know, just a way because that's going to be critical to the success of this and the teacher's understanding.
Just want to close out the, just tell you a little bit about next steps. We have met as an evaluation team to go back through the rubric and look at all the data from all 15 co-ops and then write down all the different things that we see that need to be changed within the rubric and where we need to have further discussion. We do have plans to meet with the co-op evaluation committee, probably next month in July, to talk about those various changes and things we might want to look at. And then just talk about how we would implement those changes. And also the structure as far as timing of evaluations. Do we want to go to a certain number every year? Do we want to do them all in one year again? And then also the challenges related to if we do change the rubric, how does that affect people that are being evaluated under different rules? So a lot of those discussions have to be had over the next couple of months to make decisions. But we do know that with these three, we'll have to go back fairly soon in the next evaluation cycle to redo theirs. And I know they want us to come next week, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have.
Great. And thank you so much for this project and over the last number of months in terms of really like changing the game in terms of how we look at co-ops because of their centrality to the delivery of all these innovations in the state. So thank you very much for that. Chair's report, my only real thing to report, I did meet with the new cadre of Teach for America's teachers in, and they have recombined, as some of you may know, rejoined the Arkansas and Mississippi teams. They are being trained together before they go out into the state. I met with them as part of a group about equity issues in Arkansas. Great, it's always high-energy group as they're, because they haven't started teaching yet. There's lots of great, great, great excitement energy in that group. And so it's always a very fun, fun, fun session. Does anybody else have any, we'll get into the liaison reports in a bit, but anybody have any other announcements? What's that?
Teacher of the Year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I failed. I apologize. Let's do this and then we'll go to Teacher of the Year report. How about that? I apologize. I was, I was doing it off memory at this point. And you would think after 12 months, I wouldn't remember the order. Anybody else have any other similar reports, Ms. Newton?
Dr. Barth, I have some things on the GAC. Do you want it now or when I do my ESA?
Let's wait until, until later on. Anybody else have anything this month? Okay. Ms. Cochran, Teacher of the Year.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this year, I've been sharing with you things that I've learned across the state about equity in education in Arkansas and the need for culturally responsive practices. And today, I want to share a story with you. It's a story you've probably heard me tell several times, but that's okay because it's, that's the point of the story. My dad's favorite story to tell was about a time when he was out on a run. And this man stopped him dead in his path and said, "Are you Joelle Cook's son?" My dad was skeptical of people anyway, but he said, "Yes, I am." But she's been gone for years now. And he said, "Well, she was my ninth grade math teacher and she changed my life." And my dad told that story to just about every person he spent more than 10 minutes with throughout his whole, probably the last decade of his life. And in the, in the past year, it's been almost a year, I have been inundated with stories just like that. And it's, it's really the evidence of the ever undulating wake of an educator's life. And you all, as co-authors of the story of education in Arkansas, you are a part of that wake. And the impact that you have makes ripples that touch the lives of children all throughout our state. My dad was a world history teacher and he never missed the opportunity to tell me that I won the lottery the day that I was born in this country. And he was also a fierce lover of Arkansas. And I know he would agree when I say that we won the lottery the day we were born in or moved to this great state. It's folks like you all that make Arkansas as great as it is. People who care about the kids and are willing to do whatever it takes to make their futures brighter. The futures of kids like Gee, the one I introduced you to at my very first board meeting. And he was, he had completely foreclosed upon his identity until he came in my class and I was willing to listen to his really terrible rap music. And then there are so many others, like Cole, who didn't care about Spanish at all and just wanted to get the class over with. But by the time he left, he wanted to be a Spanish teacher because it had opened his world. And then there was Maria with whom I butted heads time and time again, day in and day out, because she just didn't see the potential in herself. And now she's about to finish medical school. These kids, in all of their differences, they're what make our state amazing. There's beauty and strength in the diversity of our students. And that's what I want you to remember about my time here, is that each student is like the colors in a kaleidoscope, beautiful and unique in his or her own individual way. And I thank you so much for pouring into me your knowledge and your support and your love. And I just remember at the beginning of my year when I, you had to tell me over and over again to speak up and speak into the microphone. And it's because of you that I have found my voice. And I am eternally grateful to you all for that. And with that, I have just a small little token of my appreciation. And I didn't know that my boss was going to be here today, but I hope that you'll come visit, Dr., thank you so much, Dr. Schneider and I in Cedarville next year. That's, I did wear blue on purchase today.
[laughing]
Pirates. So excited about the year ahead.
And speaking of that, Megan Abels, I'm the coordinator of the Teacher of the Year program. We cannot send you off without some style to take with you. So you're going to need a T-shirt with your new mascot on it.
[laughing]
And I also think it's important that you show everyone you're the lead learner. And you spent the last year leading teachers all around the state. Now you're going to lead this school to success and I can't wait to watch you. And we'll be cheering for you.
Oh, right.
Right. Thanks so much, Courtney.
Good job.
All right.
Commissioner, it is yours.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. For my report, just to follow up on some things, I'm going to pass these out to you. You may have seen a version of this before, at least we've talked about it. But as we have followed this path of a new accountability system, designing a new method of supporting our schools and our districts, we have found the need to do some reorganization within the agency. If y'all remember, there was previously a system, or a, excuse me, a school improvement unit was led by Dr. Wild and then a standards for accreditation unit. Well, we have combined those. So now we have standard specialists and we have school improvement specialists working together. And we've split the state into these regions that you see reflected in the map. And the idea is that taking a team approach to supporting rather than the silos of, you know, if you have a standards question, you ask one group. If you have a school improvement question, you ask a different group. Really bringing a point of contact for all schools. School improvement typically worked with those that were identified as some level of need, like focus or priority. And with ESA and our ESA plan, we think there's a better way. So this reflects the regions and those team members that are assigned in those regions. And they're led by, as you heard Mr. Cosby yesterday when he introduced himself, he is leading that team, Standards and System Support. We also made a couple of other recent changes. The charter unit, if you remember, was under the Learning Services Division led by Stacy Smith. Well, in this concept of support, it makes more sense for that unit to be with the rest of the team that are providing support. So the charter support unit is now going to be under Ms. Kaufman, under the Public School Accountability and connected with Standards and System Support. And then from Public School Accountability, we are moving the Equity Office, Mr. Dillingham and his team, under Educator Effectiveness. And that team is going to be working with Dr. Ola and their team as one team now on Equity Labs, the Equitable Access to Effective Educators Plan, and some of those direct equity so that our Equity Office can be more proactive rather than reactive in responding. They will still do that. They will still respond if we get calls and complaints. But we really want them to contribute their talents in a more proactive way as well. So we feel like that those changes to the organization will be better, will serve our students better, will serve our districts better. So that's, and it's likely there will be more of these types of changes and reorganization efforts to come. As they are identified, I'll make sure you get updated on them. And as you get questions, you'll be able to refer folks to the right place. And that's really all I had to report, Dr. Barth.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. First off, it'd be great when, when it gets to that point, if we could get a new org chart, it'd be, I think, really helpful just to get the whole picture. On, in terms of support for, for Level V schools, so how, how does that fit into this?
Dr. Hernandez and OCS, Office of Coordinated Support and Service, they've been working closely on that. And I'm going to ask him to come up and speak to that.
Okay.
Good morning again. So just a little bit to add, to give you the picture of how Level V will work. So in that Standards and System Support Unit, that's kind of general support for all districts, whereas they haven't, unless you're a school district that needed to stand, had a standards issue or you've worked with school improvement, you've never made contact with those. And so now, these folks are actively engaging all districts at all times. They're reading their school-level plans when they're posted on August 1st. They're having ongoing conversations, say, hey, what are your needs are, and almost like an advocate for those districts. And so as it starts to reach it up, when there's some additional supports that are needed, higher levels of support, if you will, there's this, starts to be this engagement of other team members, whether they are made up of co-op type folks. OCSS will be involved in that, having discussions about how do we tailor support directly to the needs of that district. And that may look anywhere from Levels II through, even into Level IV, where we say, hey, we're going to start being more suggestive or directive of what you're doing with your, with your federal funds, what you're doing in your area of facilities, all those, using all those different systems. And so with Level V, what we're doing is really identifying a solid team around that district and that includes those Systems and Support Specialists, myself. We've actually brought on another, Sheila Whitlow, that'll be working directly with me, former superintendent of White County Central. We've also brought over the Quest Leadership Grant with Rocky Malone. She'll be working to help. And what that'll be is depending on what the issues are with Level V, for example, with Earl, you know, they have, there's the financial issue, but they're also going through a major facilities project that they've inherited. So on those needs, we've got Dr. Wild there that's working with academics, but we're also giving them support with Dr. Ola's office. So it's more of playing, I guess, if you will, kind of quarterbacking all of those different supports to really make sure that they're getting their needs met, that are tailored. But it's more in a close relationship with the superintendent and being there and providing more boots-on-the-ground type stuff. And so it varies depending on the situation. So in Dollarway's instance, you know, we're doing a lot more around academics and finance because they have that fiscal piece. But we're also starting to do things around transportation and then facilities and those types of areas as well. But we are engaging the co-ops. And I know Ms. Swan's here and we've been working kind of with the community schools concept specific to Dollarway. In Little Rock, it's, it's all of the above. You know, we're involved in just about every aspect of all six systems, working with them, providing support as needed. I don't know if that helps, but that's...
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, starts to get a picture in terms of where, in terms of the different, different districts, kind of where the, where the folk, where the energy is.
And what we're, what we're kind of going through right now is this, you know, obviously when you bring two units together, one standards, one school improvement, there is that, that, those gaps in knowledge. And so we've recently brought one of the ADE staff members, Kevin Beaumont, over to kind of lead professional development. And so we've got a big professional development schedule to build capacity of all those internal standards and system support specialists over the summer to make sure they're very familiar with all the supports that are available within the agency and the co-ops and train them in things like general finance and school improvement and standard insurance and data systems and all those things. And that'll progress throughout the summer to where they start to be more comfortable. And OCS is really actively engaged with those standards and system support specialists that we're partners in this, trying to make sure we get accurate and timely support to the, to those districts.
Thanks.
Other question, Ms.?
Yes. And will there be an opportunity, or could you make sure there's an opportunity for those who are working in the, like, Level I and II, because they're going to see a lot of really good things going on in different spots, for them to then share with the Four and Five so that mentoring opportunities, whether it be Skype or whatever, you know, superintendents getting their folks together with these others, so that it's not always just somebody from Little Rock that's coming in to fix you, but it's in fact another teacher with the exact grade and the, you know, that... for mentoring and sharing of best practices of, you know, the current 21st century word.
I can speak to probably definitely, we need to make sure we're doing more of that. Two ways that we've had in our plan to stand up is kind of this network of support with all the people that are doing support within their districts, because a lot of school districts have their school improvement specialists, so they have some district liaison leading that charge, is that we're trying to stand up like a monthly Zoom type call where people are coming in and they can share their best practices. We want to kind of towards the end of the summer, when school starts, that something that used to happen, but it was really just within school improvement schools, and we're trying to expand that. I know Commissioners challenged us, and we've talked about it, any time we have professional development or summits or AD summit that's coming up, is we really don't want to hear from us. We want to hear from, you know, the districts and what they're doing and how they're doing it to make sure that it's it's, you know, them building that tight network and really trying to move things out to to the co-op in terms of support where those districts are really sharing about support and what they're doing. So it's kind of not necessarily, just like you said, it's always somebody from Little Rock saying, hey, this is how you should do things. It's really learning from each other. And we've done some of that sharing, other districts, the way their their approach and how they're doing school level plan development and things like that.
Because I know even in a Level Five district, you're going to have outstanding principal at who's really knocking it out of the park in a school or a second grade teacher that may be in a, you know, so it doesn't always have to be the ones and twos talking to the five. Sometimes some of within the five can be leading and mentoring the others. Thank you for the consideration of that.
MySchoolInfo is a powerful tool for that, too. And I just can't stress enough with the addition of the option of schools like like this one, where within a range, you can identify, you know, similar demographics. It's just, it's a very strong tool. And what we're seeing with that is the opportunity for schools to, you know, one thing that jumps out to me is English learners. We have some schools that are doing an excellent job growing our English learners and others that need help and trying to put those folks in contact with each other so they can learn, learn from each other. I think can't overstate the potential that that has over the next few years. And then we're going to keep making that better also.
That's a good point. I don't know how much the board has had a chance to go through MySchoolInfo or hear about that, if y'all have gone through a training or something like that, that that may be.
Yeah, we had that.
Coming up.
Couple months ago.
Okay.
At a work session.
Gotcha.
But I but I think.
And we've been sharing, I mean, it's everything we do as far as training so far this summer has included that, making sure that the schools are well aware and have access and know about how to get deeper training into that. So.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Now on to our committees and task forces and such. And I'll start out with family engagement. Ms. Wright, you ready?
Yes. In regards to family engagement, in our last meeting, we really kind of focused on the future now with myself rolling off and what would some of those roles be, at least from a logistics purpose of the State Board. Obviously, with the leadership of Ms. Abels and and Kim Wright, there's a strong plan forging ahead with the department. And so a lot of the question now is where where is our value added? And how do we continue the linkages to the board, especially as we start to get prepared with the development of standards itself, which will be the work of the task force for the fall? And how do we get this body ready, right, to be able to consider those standards and make some decisions? So they, we will have one more with with myself still on this board, one more meeting next Thursday centered around some of those conversations. In the interim, Ms. Dean, and then we've also asked Dr. Hill to join the board and to join this task force as as those linkages. But we will have a little bit more exploration of what those roles might look like at next Thursday's conversation. They're doing an exceptional job. I think all of you have seen this in regards to the Zoom meetings and follow up with the different subgroups that they've had. And everything is getting prepared for a fall that takes this work into the regions, into the communities. And a lot of the work right now, the Family Engagement Task Force is identifying those community partners that will get ready to host our communities around this. I definitely am starting to feel, even as a community advocate, finally reverberations in the districts and amongst other stakeholders, that this conversations are happening and more folks wanting to tap in, which I think is is really exciting and refreshing. One of the things I'd like to put on your radar, Dr. Barth, as our liaison with FORWARD, and I know that there's still some transitions there, too, and staffing and things like this. But the topic of family engagement actually came up in one of the FORWARD meetings that they had this spring in Springdale. And and yet, where there was some kind of, and even with with Gina no longer being in FORWARD, I guess one of the things I just want to make sure is that there's that intentionality in that conversation, because there were pieces of what was discussed by the Springdale School District and 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 by FORWARD, and the and the linkages weren't directly necessarily made with some of this and the standards and the process. So I think that there's a continued opportunity there. And I would say, in addition to what could be the role and how can this department or the State Board of Education add most value, then the other piece of the conversation is that continued language linkage with FORWARD, right? And how does this all become part of a comprehensive effort that really isn't, it's not duplicating efforts, but it's creating linkages across the state? I will say, one of the things that I learned from that that FORWARD meeting that I'll definitely be bringing to the Family Engagement Task Force, the Springdale School District, as we know, has a high number of immigrant children, obviously Hispanic and Marshallese. And and I was actually invited to that FORWARD meeting in the capacity as a community member that works with our immigrant community. And there was really only a handful of us that identified as Latino or Marshallese that was in the group. And it was just really fascinating to see, as we distributed into working conversations, how how the families were really positioned. Now, you please speak on on behalf of your entire community, right? That whole sort of tokenism, and I think it was a celebration, but it was one that I think is a caution, and it's one that's going to have to be built. You know, thankfully, it was a safe space where there was a lot of sharing and I thought good constructive conversation. A lot of acknowledgement that more is going to need to be done to be able to bring the community to the table. But and then that there was going to be some intentionality of having to go to the community, and that we can't always expect that they come from us. So I thought that was a really good balance between some initial first efforts and acknowledgement of the challenge and acknowledgement of the work ahead. And so and I think that's just something in general, we're going to have to see, right, where this is an ongoing process. And and so I'm very grateful for Ms. Abels and Ms. Wright to really build in this summer to be and have these intentional planning and conversations, leveraging this moment. And but I do feel statewide, people are poised for these conversations, and they're glad that the Department of Ed and the State Board of Education are playing a role. And so I I I'm excited about in the transition, what we can continue to do to be a support from a community advocacy viewpoint in terms of ensuring the success of this work. But with that, Ms. Abels, I don't know if there's more that you would want to make sure the State Board knows. But as has been advertised, we do have a meeting next Thursday. Ms. Wright would probably want me to lift up for you all that they are doing an innovation event next week at the Clinton School. And I'm very humbled that I'll get to get to be one of the judges next Thursday in that process. And maybe you want to just, Ms. Abels, speak a few words to that event. But it is definitely a testament to these ladies. They never stop, and they keep doing. And and they're going to leverage every single moment of this opportunity. And the fact that they even have this on the calendar already at this stage, I think, is a testament to them.
Yes, thank you. And we are looking forward to a partnership where we're going to be bringing community members in, students, teachers, business leaders, to help us determine what kind of toolkits we're going to need to be providing to schools as we push out these new frameworks and standards. So we're excited to get their ideas and then, of course, celebrate a winner, right? And I think that'll be an exciting event coming up. We just finished our four Zoom meetings with our stakeholders and got, I can't even tell you how many pages of notes and ideas. And it was just so exciting to hear their feedback. And it's so funny, because every time we get ready to think, okay, what should we do next? Kim and I look at each other, and we go, why are we asking this? Let's ask our people. And it's really made us be intentional and say, let our stakeholders guide this process. And why are we trying to do all of the figuring out? Stop. Let's let them tell us what's next, what's coming, what this should look like, what should go in it. And it's just, it's been so great. And I know I told you last time that I was going to go to Stuckhart and help with a parent meeting there. And we use the model of how we've been doing our stakeholder meetings there with them and those parents and family members and community members. And it was such a powerful moment for for those families to come in and hear mothers say, I've never been to a meeting like this, where I felt empowered and had a voice in my child's school and the decision making. And it was, I feel like we're really getting a big ball rolling, and it's really exciting. And and I thank all of you for your help and support. And just stay tuned, because great things are coming. So. Any questions?
Great. So first off, I have voice to both FORWARD and funders, the importance of FORWARD's assistance in terms of y'all's work in 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 recent months and how central this is to to that vision. And so so I have, I think they've heard it, but we'll see where that goes in terms of in terms of response. I'll continue to say it. So just in terms of clarity about moving forward, so so y'all's, your vision is that task force needs to to remain, it will will move from a stage now that's more focused on implementation, but there needs to remain a link between this board and the implementation of the of the plan, right? Is that is that a fair assessment?
And so, you know, at this stage, I would say the plan and implementation is really owned by the department. It's it's not been owned by us. I think a lot of our work this year was trying to make sure that the department had some consultants, resources, support, had the backing of this board in every step of the way. But over the course of the fall, without ever intentionally having to do so, they they have been running it on their own. And and so our monthly meetings really have been more about catching up to speed and then assessing what the specific needs are at that time, and then making sure that as we're in this implementation stage, that we're involved so that we're also a stakeholder, a seat at the table, and we're not just hearing this thing's third party, but directly. I still see value in that. I don't know with the monthly meetings, and I guess I would actually ask Megan, this is one of the things we were going to talk about at our meeting next Thursday. But what have are these meetings now adding value? Or is it just another thing on your list? I do see that what we're going to have to do come fall is get prepared for these standards, right? And so but I don't know if it's still in the form of a task force, or is it just a work session, as we've had on other, where Megan and her team come present. They've indicated they they still want the backing of the board. But I don't know if it's something in the formalness, as it has been this last year of a meeting, right, is is what's going to be most helpful to you all at this time. Do you have any instincts, Ms. Abels?
I think I can speak for the team and say that the connections that you all have are very important to us. And as we plan these regional events, we're going to need y'all to help bring the right people to the table, find the right partners to get the locations. And I think until we can finish those events, it would be very valuable for us to continue those monthly meetings. And then once we complete those and really get a draft done, I think it would hopefully then be time to come in and maybe do a work session and let and where I would love your input is, do you want to have that on the beginning side to see where we are in the creation process? Or once we have a draft and just see almost what would be a final product? And that's something, you know, we would, we definitely want y'all to be a part of that. So.
A question.
Yeah.
The the agenda for next week has a graph. Is that a proposed timeline? Or is?
It is the timeline we're trying to stay on.
Okay. I didn't know. It was very informative about what you could do. I was surprised that it was so long. You know, I thought it would be sooner. But I also understand it's easier to watch a loaf of bread than to make one. So.
And and I think it'll, it will give you some clarity to understand, once we create these standards, our goal is to then provide toolkits for each layer within those standards. So if we're asking teachers to maybe one option would be a home visit, well, they may not know how to do that. And so then they would be able to click in and read what the research says about home visits, then how to set one up, tips on how to do one, and being culturally responsive in that. And so a lot of additional layers are going to go into this, and it's going to be a very timely process. So.
Good. But if those of you have, if you haven't looked at their agenda for next Thursday, I found that graph very helpful to inform me, to reinforce what y'all are saying, so I better understand it. Thank you.
So so I think that what I'm hearing is task force stays in place. Ms. Dean will be.
She's willing to chair.
Reporting. Dr. Hill is going to join. And then we we will stay in touch about the timing of a work session and at what stage of that that process. And and it may make the most sense more as we're to a draft document. That may be the time that makes the most sense, as long as we're getting regular updates along the way.
I know the Courtney was on that committee, too, this year. And I was going to ask her, do you think that with all the already decided responsibilities of the Teacher of the Year, that having Randy also have that as something to do? Or would it, is there, are you already too overwhelmed with your real life and your responsibilities as Teacher of the Year?
It got a little hairy this spring. But I think that if she knows in advance, and and there is a timeline already there, that it should be fine. And it's just having, it's just scheduling. That's all it is. So if she knows in advance, she'll have those those already in place, she can schedule around it.
If she didn't feel obligated, but on those occasions when it did work to do it, but not, but then she could get voice updates at the State Board meeting.
Yeah, I think I think it's an excellent idea, because as she's traveling the state, she can be spreading that message everywhere she goes.
And Ms. Hook, I want you to know, she has given me a list of her priorities for the year, and one of those is the family engagement work. And that's one thing she wants to be a part of.
Well, I think that makes.
That's what one thing she did so well as a teacher.
Right.
That was a huge thing for her.
Well, I think it makes perfect sense. So I was going to try to reach out to Ms. House, too, just just talking. And you may have her list of priorities, but I also wanted to visit with her. But it sounds like this may make perfect sense as a as a place for her to engage. Okay. All right. Thank you. And the time on that meeting next Thursday is?
Next Thursday at 1:00. So the event will be wrapping up at the Clinton School. If anyone is here and wants to see the the school districts at work, and that will be from 9:00 until, I believe, noon that day. And then we will convene at 1:00 at Copper Grille for a working lunch.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you. And I just want to thank the Chair and the entire board for for this opportunity. I feel it was several years in the making, as the Commissioner said, me trying to figure out within my 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 own kind of expertise and interests and voice where I could add the most value. And I just feel extremely grateful that this opportunity simultaneously came to our state and and that that we were able to give some of that that energy and passion and sell us a home. I look forward to continuing to to support your team in my my new role as a community advocate.
Indeed. One one final question. So in terms, totally mundane. In terms of the grant.
Yes.
Is it expended entirely?
Actually, I don't know.
You've still got a little bit of money there for, okay. So we'll.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I will get all the reporting, though, by done by the end of the month.
Perfect.
And I've let NASB know that.
Okay. Okay, and if I could just get copied, just so kinda know where we are on that, on that grant.
Too much at this point. I think it's, and, and the, the money is there for, and I think that part of it was that we were anticipating we'd use the funds for those regional meetings. And at first we were thinking the regional meetings would take place this spring. When we realized, all of us realized that was too ambitious, uh, we've now, uh, it would be for the fall period. So I'll make sure as part of my final report, um, with your, with your permission, Mr. Chair, to see if, if the final funds could be expended as part of those regional meetings as planned.
Yeah, I'm sure that.
Uh, just, that would be a fall timeline.
Perfect, great, okay. Student discipline.
Uh, yes.
Dr. Hill, and microphone.
I'm sorry. We did not meet, um, yesterday. We will have all of our recommendations, Ms. Lamb and Doug will put in those together with come to the committee for July for the next year moving forward. So all of our recommendations will be submitted to be in our packet for the next board meeting.
Okay, and, um, is it clear whether that needs to be on the action agenda? Or is that kind of on the report agenda?
What do you think, Commissioner? You know, based on your.
I don't think there's any action that would, would take place.
No, no, just to review.
Uh, but we can certainly, we can certainly designate it for, uh, on the agenda for discussion.
I want Ms. Lamb to speak to, to the board.
Yeah, so we can put it, we can separate it not as necessarily an action item, but separate from the consult or the consent agenda.
Okay.
For a purpose of discussion.
Okay.
And so that'll be in our packet.
Yeah, okay, super, thank you.
On the last question about the grant, uh, Mr. Bradbury just texted me, there's about fifteen hundred dollars left.
Okay, so.
We're close, we're close, yeah.
Super, thanks. Okay, um, moving down, uh, Forward Arkansas. The, um, several things there. First off, um, I know that several of you, uh, attended Forward Together conversations and, and, uh, thank you, and Forward sends its, its thanks for that. The, uh, the, they noted, uh, Forward folks noted the value because of the insight of, of State Board members, just how valuable your participation was in that. That, um, they have, uh, developed an initial, initial document out of those conversations that is a what we heard document that tries to sum up the focus of that. And that is going to, of course, be important as Forward really begins to think about its, um, its, uh, focus in terms of, uh, policy change moving forward. And so, uh, so those conversations are, are very important to that. They also thank the individual members who have had meetings with Forward, uh, in recent weeks to get updated and, 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 uh, connect there. There is, um, an implementation working group partners meeting, uh, in mid-July. That'll be forthcoming. Y'all will all get invited to that. I will coordinate when I get that date with, with Ms. Hollis so that press can be notified of that because, um, probably multiple board members will be there. So that is coming off and then, uh, coming on, on board. And then, um, there, the data symposium, which you've heard about before, that is scheduled for September twenty-seventh, uh, twenty-eighteen in Little Rock. And so if you could put the.
Say that again.
Uh, September twenty-seventh in Little Rock. And, um, 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 Arje Sarkar from the department has been on the planning committee for that symposium. So put, please do put that on your calendar. More details to come about, about when and the exact time of that. Uh, and that's really thinking about how we get our data systems together and use that data more thoughtfully. As suggested, I have been in some conversations, uh, about, about Forward's funding going forward, what that means for the department and some of our initiatives. So, um, I will stay in touch on that. That brings me to the point though, as we created this spot of Forward liaison, we said that, um, the, a new liaison would be appointed, uh, prior to the last six months of, uh, of the tenure of a State Board member. So obviously I'm moving towards that six-month period in the coming months. And so I would invite individuals who have an interest in serving as liaison to Forward to let me, uh, let me know that via Ms. Hollis. And, um, then, you know, we'll, we'll make that determination about who should take that role. And I think it probably makes more sense for there, there to be an overlap period and then that person would take on that role in, uh, at the end of the calendar year. Does that sound good, everybody? Okay, all right. Public school accountability, Ms. Hook.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, I skipped, I skipped Essa. I'm being bad here.
It's not easy being Chair.
Essa, and, and, um, on the, uh, the GAC, why don't we save that for NASB? When we get to NASB, but do you have anything on, on, on Essa?
The Steering Committee met, uh, at the end of May and, um, we got, uh, a great deal of information on that day about the implementation and the progress that, uh, was being made. And so I'm just gonna read through some of the, the main, main points that we learned that day. Ms. Kaufman did an excellent job of bringing this up to date. So the department was providing support to districts so they would better understand the student data, the, the cycle of inquiry as far as school improvement, that how it was, a, a continuous cycle of improvement. She told us that the projected date for, um, uh, corrections on the, from spring testing would open on August one and was hoping that that would be kinda done so that in October they could start putting out maybe the S, S of School Index and school rating at that time. So that was kinda what projected. Commissioner, you step in when I say something wrong, okay?
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, they are, uh, the schools were supposed to have their, um, plans submitted by May one to the district and then district is supposed to have it posted on the website by August first. And that would, uh, uh, get it publicly and, and so that they could start looking at plans and so that those school improvement plans hopefully will start marrying what students' needs are and so that the districts can make progresses and start doing some evidence-based interventions to, uh, and practices. They also covered the, uh, new, uh, standards and system support, so y'all have already heard that. They've gotten good, um, uh, compliments on the business rules that have been published, on how the S of School Index was calculated and that they would be reviewed annually to make any adjustments that would be needed. And this is a part that, that I may have to have, Ms. Kaufman, it's not in here, I was hoping she would be here. So Commissioner, you step in if I, when I say this wrong. But, um, the Aspire Testing, uh, recalibrated their ELA scores. And when that was done, that is going to make a change in how the A to F is going to look for this next year. So there's going to need to be a concordance done to make that, uh, work correctly. And so Commissioner, I want you to explain that better than what I just did place.
Well, it, you know, you did, you did a great job. You remember when we went from Benchmark to Park to ACT Aspire? There had to be a concordance so that there was, um, equivalence across the three. Well, because of the ACT Aspire changes to their ELA cut scores, which were driven by the ACT, uh, again, there's, I mean, this is a good thing in that we wanna make sure there's alignment across all those elements. What it did was, uh, if you run this year's numbers, the twenty-seventeen numbers based on those new cut scores, there were changes, would have been changes in about two-hundred-and-thirty-something schools, I think, regarding their letter grade. So as to not change the, uh, the landscape due to no fault of, of, you know, the schools or the students or the teachers or the department, Dr. Arola worked to create this concordance. It's been reviewed by the Governor's Office. And, you know, there, there will still be some impact on a few schools' letter grades, assuming, um, you know, that would be assuming their twenty-seventeen grades or, or twenty-eighteen scores are reflective of the twenty-seventeen. What we hope is that folks are moving up on their scores. So, uh, but we're trying to make sure that the playing field stays level and not, um, unduly impact, uh, the school ratings because of something that was beyond our control.
So, and, and, uh, they did a great job of explaining that, Dave. But it, just to make sure everybody understands, the, the students are gonna see what they actually did. It, it's the, the, um, the recalibration of, at the ACT was to determine whether students were college-ready or not. And, and so that when they recalibrated that, that, um, student score is still gonna be showing whether or not they're college-ready or not. It's just the A to F that will, will see the, the concordance fall. So, I thought that was really important to, to make sure we understood. I think that's the, um, main points of the meeting. It was very informative. I encourage you, um, to, um, go and, and look at maybe the live stream when they get that up and, and, uh, look at it. We also have another meeting planned in October, um, after the S of reports are, are released and to kinda see, see where we're at and, and look at the concordance and how the cut scores, uh, were done and injustice, uh, adjusted based on peer review.
Great, will that concordance issue have to come to us or?
I'm looking at you, Lori. The.
Concordance issue.
The cut, the A to F shift, we all, we will have to bring that to the State Board. We'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay, we'll get back to you.
Yep.
One thing that also will be finished by October is that we're out with the assistance of CCSSO doing the focus groups, uh, I think, focus groups in Pine Bluff and Jonesboro, uh, other places that are, uh, looking at our, working with Batel for Kids, looking at our, uh, at the reports themselves, the communication pieces. Are they helpful to parents and stakeholders? What can, what can we do better? What, you know, so, so that we don't get caught up only putting things in education speak. So there will, there's a lot of work going on this summer on that. And by, uh, that next meeting in October, maybe before then, we'll have some feedback, uh, on, from that work too.
Ms. Cocker?
I, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to mention this, but I've had a few teachers mention, um, the pilot questions on the ACT Aspire and how that's really, um, it's creating test anxiety for the students. It's, it's this, um, you know, they, they've trained for a certain number of questions and then they get this extra question on the ACT Aspire. With it having such a big impact on the S of scores, um, I don't know. It just seems like something that maybe we could look at.
Yeah, we've, um, I was made aware of that last week. Susan Wagner mentioned that to me and, uh, hope is out, but we need to get with the assessment unit and, uh, just let them know that, of that feedback and understand, did we know that was gonna take place and did we communicate that? And, uh, Stacy was in and I think she stepped back out. But, uh, we, we plan to take that feedback from last week and find out what the story is and maybe get some clarity.
That's great.
Yeah.
Great, any other questions on S of implementation? Okay, um, now we're to public school accountability.
Okay.
I have Ms. Kaufman's, uh, report and, uh, some of it has already been touched on all during today. But it, uh, the Standards and System Support Team has joined the leadership team on the summer co-op tour, I guess with, uh, Dr. Hernandez. The specialists have been making face-to-face introductions and plans for supporting their districts. That list that we were given, uh, the, those different people so they will know who they are. Also, the Standards and System Support Team is awaiting final approval of the standards for accreditation rules. And I think that is taking place right now or it may have, uh, taken place. They had to go before the legislative body to, uh, respond to questions. Maybe if it, the meeting is over, we might get a report, uh, before we leave. They're working on the monitoring tool. The monitoring tool will be made public by the beginning of the school year. Our Federal Programs Group, uh, has developed a federal monitoring process and tool. And the document is out for public review and will be assessed through a Commissioner's memo. There's Ms. Kaufman now, so she may have information for us. Under School Performance, the School Performance is finalizing the eighteen, uh, business rules for calculating the S of School Index and will post the document on ADE website informational documents page. This document was reviewed by the public through Commissioner's memo. If y'all aren't signed up to get those Commissioners Memo, you may wanna do that because they're very helpful and, and really keep you up to date on what's going on. Thank you, Commissioner. The Equity Assistance Center, uh, has completed the Garland County Desegregation Monitoring. The draft report has been sent to the Garland County School Districts for review. Just as a reminder, uh, the Garland County, uh, districts, uh, were still under federal, uh, guidance, court, uh, saying that unfortunately, in my opinion, they were still supposed to make decisions about transfers based on race. And, um, that seemed so out of date to me, so, uh, we'll see what happens from that. And then the additional news which we got earlier is the Charter Office has moved to public school accountability, which makes sense that the Charter Unit worked closely with standards and support. The Equity Assistance Center is moving to educator effectiveness with Dr. Oa and his team to help with that. And this is, uh, to, a great leading opportunity for those teams. So, uh, we're talking about teacher leaders. We're now talking about, uh, staff leaders within the department. And, uh, uh, sometimes you discover skills that you were not even aware you had. So I, I commend the department and the decision they made around that. If you have questions, Ms. Kaufman's in the room.
She can also address that, uh, cut score issue and answer that question about the, bring, bringing it here to the board.
Good morning.
Good morning. Debbie Kaufman, Assistant Commissioner in Public School Accountability. The question was, would the, uh, concordance have to be brought before the board? The ADF, the new. The new concordance. Recommended cut scores, yes. Um, we put those back out in our school rating rules. If you remember, those came to you first as emergency rules so that we could utilize those by April to get the April reports out. And then we were in the process of sending the permanent rules, um, or the rules to be promulgated, um, out. And, uh, they'd gone out for the first public comment and then this all came to light and we've gone to work on that. They will go out for second public comment and then they'll come back to you for final approval. And, uh, just to add to that, we did present that information to our community of practitioners, our committee of practitioners on the federal side, um, that we knew the ELA cut scores were changing. We didn't know yet what the impact to A to F would be. So I'll follow back up with them. We meantime, after that meeting, then we had our committee of practi, we had our, uh, committee for the S of Steering Committee meeting and I presented that information to the S of Steering Committee. And the recommendation from that committee was that Dr. Roll and I do a webinar after school gets started to, um, help schools really understand it. But we've been going out and presenting that information to, um, the co-ops, to the superintendents and or principals and other staff that are attending those co, summer co-op meetings. And we're presenting that information to them and overwhelmingly they've been, way to go. Thanks for looking out for us.
Any other questions?
While you're there, would you give us an update on what just happened across the.
The standards for accreditation are official.
Yay!
We're super excited, thank you.
Thanks for your hard work on that. Yep. Okay, um, so that moves us on to AD Human Resources. Ms. Chambers, anything?
Just wanna appreciate, uh, Stacy, Stacy Smith has been my contact. Uh, there have been a number of initiatives over a period of months, including organizational structure, culture of diversity and inclusion. Most recently, some material that, uh, they've given me an opportunity to review that have to do with really personal skills that'll be. be taught and facilitated, it's around kind of character and being a good citizen, uh, so, just good things going on, and I appreciate the opportunity to get to participate with them.
Thanks for your help on that. Um, and then on the NASB front, and I know that, that, uh, Ms. Reif has trans, has transitioned there, I, I had one NASB update, and then I'll turn it over, uh, to Ms. Newton for the, uh, Government Affairs Committee. Um, this week, uh, the President of NASB, uh, Chris Almanson, uh, who's been President for five years, um, announced her retirement, uh, at the end of the year, um, she, uh, will stay on as a se, as a senior advisor moving forward, um, uh, Robert Hall, who has been, um, the Vice President, um, is, uh, is going to step up, uh, to be President, uh, of NASB. Um, hi, his main, uh, partic, uh, the, we, I think everybody agreed that it was important to have, uh, to keep as smooth a transition as possible because the NASB Board is, uh, is undertaking a strategic plan that's in the closing stages of this period, and it's very important that that strategic plan be implemented by somebody who knows the organization well, rather than having, uh, to spend time learning the organization. And so that is the, the big news on the NASB front, um, I was at the NASB Board meeting, uh, this, uh, last, uh, week, um, and that was obviously a lot of focus of internal conversations, both, both of those items, the strategic plan and then this transition. Uh, but then on the Government Affairs Committee front, Ms. Newton?
There were, there were several things this month, it was a very informative month, but, um, one thing I wanna do is first give a shout-out to our department and our leaders, um, it, it just, I, I was amazed, but there's still several, several states that are scrambling to get their plans approved, and we are, we are well on our way to, to having a great job, and so I just wanna give y'all a pat on the back for, for doing such a good job of getting, uh, a, not just a plan written, but something that is positive for our state, and, and, and so, uh, you know, I, I, I'm, I was just so proud of y'all when I was listening to the others, you know, about our state and how, how well y'all had done, so I, I wanna thank all of y'all for, for your great work. But, uh, one thing that they, they brought out was, uh, the question was asked, how was the, uh, how was the, the federal part, how, how was that oversight, how was they, how were they gonna oversee the actual implementation, and, and they said that it was gonna be done through, uh, mainly two different ways, first was through just the monitoring of the grants, individual grants, and the other way, uh, they said the con, consolidated state performance report, uh, that template was being aligned right now to the SO requirement, so those were the two main ways that they said that, that the plans, um, the implementation of the plans would be over, overseen. Uh, the other things that I, I wanted to be sure and bring to y'all were, uh, I, I know you've heard about the, uh, not only do we have a, a school safety commission here in our state, but there's one at the federal level also, and, uh, they're doing four, uh, regional meetings, and, um, they've already had one, and I'm getting Kalisha to, to forward to you a, um, a document, um, that is a, uh, transcript of the, uh, of, of one of the, uh, of a testimony, so, so you can kinda read that and see what some of the testimony was, but they said that there was gonna be three more readings, meetings, did not know where they were, but they encouraged us, if they were anywhere remotely close that we, where we could attend, that it would be great if we could have state board members, uh, from around the nation to attend those, and they would say they would be pushing out those dates later, so, uh, it, uh, I'm sure Dr. Barth, when you hear that, if you could share that information, uh, it would be good. And the other, the other front that they, they want input from, and this will be discussion of our next, at our next monthly meeting, is, um, uh, they are looking that there's gonna be legislation on, on the CTE front, uh, at the federal level, uh, discussed, and, uh, there was a letter, uh, uh, written in 2017 from, uh, the NASB and about CTE and what, um, what they thought that, what NASB thought the focus should be, and this is going to, I think, going to be kinda revamped and redone, and so I had, I'm gonna have Kalisha to forward this also to you, and so if you could give me input on this before our ne, my next meeting in July, uh, that would be very, very helpful to kinda what Arkansas's viewpoint of CTE, CTE and where we think that it, that it needs to go, so if you can get me those two pieces of information, um, that would be helpful for me. And, and this, I should've done it during the chair's report, but, um, she came after I did, and so, so I just wanted to, to thank, um, uh, Ms. Co, uh, Ms. Cochran for, um, reminding me of the focus of why I am up here. You know, I've been out of the classroom now, this is my, going on thr, three years, and just to hear those kids' stories, you know, that's why we're up here, you know, and, and, you know, we go and visit schools, but you still don't get that same inter, interaction with, with students, and so it was just a great reminder, uh, of why that we, we do what we do, and so, you know, that, that was very positive, and one other thing I wanna give a shout-out to her and, and, um, Ms. Abels was, uh, some of the great things that, that they are doing to, um, make, uh, ed, educators feel valued, uh, to let that voice be heard, the Teach Ar, Teach Arkansas campaign that's going on right now, the things that they've done with that, um, this last week, they set up a meeting with, with the Governor, with the AEN group, and our voice was heard, uh, and our voice was valued, and, and you can't imagine how that makes a teacher feel, to think somebody cares about what you think, somebody wants to listen to what you think, and then somebody might actually do something with, with what you said, you know, that, that was impactful, one of the, one of the, um, ladies that I sat at the table with, one of the teachers that I sat at the table with on that day, said, uh, she said, "I've been in education for, um, more than thirty years, this is the first time someone has ever asked my opinion, I've given it lots of times, but this is the first time I've ever been asked for it." And so, you know, that is a testament to what's going on, and, um, Commissioner, you're exactly right, I think we're gonna see some results of this, the viewpoint of educators in education is changing for the better, and so I think it's a direct result of what, what some of your leaders in the department are doing.
That, uh, and that actually, uh, reminds me of something I, I may have mentioned at, at dinner last night, but we obviously get to have ongoing, um, interaction with Ms. Abels and with, with you, um, but I think there are a lot of other former Teachers of the Year that we only seen in passing, and I think it would be very helpful for me as a board member, for us to, on, on a Friday, you know, have a panel of former Teachers of the Year who have gone back into, um, either administration of the classroom or co-op work, and, you know, kinda give that perspective to us, you know, from having been on this board and understand the decisions that we make, I think it would be, I think that would be helpful, and so if you, if you agree that that might be a good thing, I'll, you know, probably work with Ms. Abels on that, because I think you're totally right, we, we, we come to really, uh, connect with those folks during the, the year they're here, um, uh, as board members, but we need to do what we can to maintain that voice and their insights into the policymaking, uh, role, so, so look for that, um, sometime next year. Um, and thanks for those comments, um, Ms. Newton. Um, Ms. Hook, anything on special education?
Uh, no, uh, uh...
Microphone.
Sorry. As you remember, the, uh, uh, Ms. Tyler was, uh, moved, it, it's a promo, it was a promotion, right? All right.
Yes, promoted, yes.
Was promoted, and, uh, so she and her team are sort of, I guess, doing double duty, that, uh, position that she held is still open, and the commissioner and I'm sure the staff are anxious for that to be filled, so I don't apply for it.
Nobody else laughed, uh, Ms. Hook.
They weren't sure if it was okay to laugh, it wasn't. Most of what I say can be taken tongue-in-cheek.
Alright, anything else? Okay, um, alright, um, final thing I wanna brainstorm for just a minute, uh, while we're, while we're all here, um, we have had these two task forces this year, family engagement and, um, and discipline, um, obviously it's time to think about the year ahead, um, are there, as we think back across the past year, are there issues that have begun to bubble in a way that, uh, where we think we could provide some di, uh, different insight, um, that voids that other entities out there are not tackling, uh, in the realm of, of public education? Is there anything that's popped into your head that might, might be deserving of a task force or some other entity like that, uh, for us to begin to try to tackle on the State Board moving forward?
Are you mentioning an additional or something we should tag on to what we're doing?
Um, is there, I mean, I, I think the, you know, family engagement, uh, has been a, you know, great example of, of really spending a year tackling the issue, now moving to, into creation of policy, I think what we're gonna see next month with discipline is something similar in terms of that being some, you know, tangible, um, pieces, and I, I'm just wondering if there are other issues like those out there that we've heard a lot as we've dealt with this year, that aren't being taken care of somewhere else, I mean, if, if, if there's another entity in the department or elsewhere that are tackling it, um, I don't think we need to get in, in that turf, but if there's something that you've thought, wait a minute, we, somebody needs to really take this on, and the State Board needs to be a leader on these things. Ms. Chambers?
This may be more of a clarification of where it is being done as opposed to, it's something new, but what we talked about yesterday, as we continue to see opportunities for charters to come into both Little Rock and to the state more broadly, is there some group looking specifically at a more intentional plan that helps us understand what communities are looking for, uh, the demographics, the money, the, all the things that factor into where are the dollars best spent for the students' best interest? And does, is somebody currently looking at that, or is that something that we should set up a group to more specifically focus on?
Okay, and I'm gonna just get some ideas here, and then, obviously Commissioner and I'll sit down and, and once your June gets less cra, once June disappears, probably, uh, and, and kinda talk about the year ahead, but I just wanted us to have an opportunity to kinda brainstorm these things.
I think it's that one. It was, it was me.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I don't know, and we talk about this, and I don't know, this, this may be spread across a broad spectrum, but it deserves specific emphasis, is public safety with what's going on in schools, and we talk, and I don't know if that's just a discipline, um, thing to be considered, I mean, with things happening at schools today, um, I don't, I mean, what's our responsibility to, you know, to, to make sure, and it's, you know, I, I reference, you know, when you, when you, when you expel, suspend kids, the public safety takes place, and sometimes in the community, uh, because of that, I mean, I, it's a very complex issue, and we see what's happening at schools today throughout the United States of America, and how can we preserve safety, you know, for education? And that's a very complex thing, and I don't know, you know, you can say that's a discipline thing, but, you know, the public safety, when, when, uh, you, you, you discipline kids is at stake, and I think we have to take that into maybe, and I, I'll talk about this from, on, from the family engagement, uh, piece as well, so, but, I don't really know, I'm just expressing that for something for the Board to consider, because, you know, public safety right now is huge, I mean, around, across the country, and specifically, I'm just aware of incidents, what I share with the Commission on, on a regular basis that's, that are taking place, you know, in urban communities, more so than rural communities, uh, and I, and I don't have the answer, but I just think it's something that, 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 um, the task force, uh, must address, which then leads to what you, you know, yesterday talking about the opioids, which, which you, I mean, those, those things are becoming more prevalent each and every day that we're hearing on the news that kids are getting involved in that, and, you know, could be from med, medication, as, as, just 'cause a teacher, could happen to a student, and, you know, from accidents, so, I mean, I think these are things that are restricting us to reach the academic and educational goals that we aspire to, uh, and, and sometimes out of sight, out of mind, uh, because it's not something that we see on a day-to-day basis, but when we're involved with the families and the communities of, 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 of young people that, that, uh, that may not have the support system that even the teacher had yesterday to be able to go back home to, is it something we need to look at?
Is, with this, oh, sorry.
Sorry, and we may actually be aligned in, in our thinking, but I believe the Governor has a task force on public safety, but...
School safety.
The, the, the school safety, but then I wonder if, um, and I know that Mr. Bradbury, and we're well represented by Mr. Bradbury in that, but maybe it might be helpful to have a State Board member as well that is a liaison in case there's implications of, of policies that this could take, and, and to that I would just add, um, an issue that I did not get a chance to get to this year, um, and I apologize to all for that, um, family engagement really took off in a way, but, um, some of you all might remember in July, um, uh, our Chair asked me to look into mental health, and, um, the example of a task force that was created, uh, by our colleagues in Kansas, I believe it was, and whether that might be a best practice, and those two actually, it's this, in many cases, it's per me, it's same, same coin, two different sides, and I just wonder, and, and that's something that we haven't, um, at least as a State Board, but again, um, in, in other states, State Boards are, are tackling this issue, so maybe an opportunity tied to both.
And you're right, because the issues that I'm discovering, uh, with a young man that was, um, suspended, uh, that went on to shot somebody who was from school, had mental health issues, which now prevent public safety to take place within the communities, and then kids knowing that, "I'm, I'm not going to school today because I'm at risk," and I mean, those are things that we don't ever think about, but that, that, that's coming to my attention, that I'm not sure where that goes, Dr. Barth, but I just know it's, it's of something, because it's keeping kids from not going to school.
Yeah, I think those are, those are great, um, yeah.
Yeah, well, just to say, uh, also, Mr. Caminar is very active on the school safety commission, uh, Mr. Bradbury, Mr. Montgomery, from a facility standpoint, so, uh, we, we are, um, anticipating, Don, is it June, the end of July, when the first report?
Twenty ninth of June.
Twenty, twenty ninth of June, okay, so, end of this month, uh, first report, so it, it's good timing that we'll see what that report says, where the Governor may wanna go, and there may be room for, uh, this Board to look at, uh, organizing some type of, uh, committee or task force, depending on what those recommendations are. The, uh, the other thing I would say, too, on all of these brainstorming ideas, uh, if there are, and there are, because there's some mental health work that's going on in, in the agency, um, that, some things that maybe on a, a Friday, before you determine how you wanna respond, uh, going forward, is we could bring in our teams that are working on some of these issues, giving you an update on where we are and what the plans are moving forward, and you can then see what would be appropriate for, for this Board to do.
Ms. Hook and then Ms. Newton, did you have a, Ms. Newton?
She said, "When I was..."
Okay, Ms. Newton?
The, the only other thing, and, and I, I don't know if this is a big-picture issue, or if it's even an issue that we would've wanted to look at, or if it's out, out of our power, the other thing that I'm hearing from, uh, districts and teachers multiple times is they are wishing for some sort of alignment between pre-K standards, curriculums, that sort of thing, and what we have in kindergarten, it, sorry, uh, they're, they're wishing for some sort of alignment between pre-K and K, and, you know, I don't know if that's ever in our power, or if that's something that we can even look at, but I'm hearing that multiple, multiple places.
Yeah, we, we're, there's work going on there, too, as a matter of fact, I just texted Stacy and all the conversation about, um, literacy and the science of reading, I asked her, are we working to upgrade pre-K ELLA, and, you know, and align it, and, and it, it's on the list, it hasn't been done yet, but it is on the list under our work on literacy and, and early reading, so, uh, there, there, there are a number of those things as well that are happening, and that's feedback that I know the Governor received in a recent meeting from superintendents, is that alignment with pre-K and kindergarten, so it's on the radar.
I'm thinking that, uh, I know at least the superintendents I speak to, that's why many of them are bringing it into their district, so they can work together on that, I think Mary Kay was overly, uh, positive about how much of that's done between the separate ABC center that's not actually on the campus of a district, so, uh, I think there's, yes, work to, work to be done there, but it sounds like the Department is on it, and I would think since ADE controls the money, even though DHS is in charge of the actual program itself, that we would... actual program itself, that we would have a lot of leverage in getting that done.
So these are great ideas. I think what Commissioner and I'll visit about is, you know, what makes sense in terms of work sessions, what makes sense in terms of that we know, we've heard it enough that it's time for us to take action. So this is, this is super helpful.
The one from yesterday too, I think Senator Elliott texted the two of us with an idea that I think has merit, and that's maybe a joint effort between Economic Development Commission, State Board of Education, because of that vital link between education and economic development. And so we'll explore what that might look like. And I'll contact Director Preston over at Economic Development, gauge their interest.
Yeah, that might be a liaison role as well in terms of an ongoing relationship too between this Board and ADE. So, yeah. So, okay. This is all super helpful, getting my brain going. The other final thing is, in terms of liaison roles, Ms. Hook, you're happy with your liaison roles continue to make sense to you?
Ms. Coleman is happy with that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then Human Resources, obviously, development, ASO, we've said. Yeah.
Let's rock on.
And then I will also talk to you about NASB as well. So we'll talk about that as well.
I forgot one member, Dr. Barth. Courtney Salas-Ford is also working with the Safety Commission, bringing the legal and obviously years of her experience in special ed, so didn't want to forget that.
And Ms. Dean will obviously continue her work on discipline and family engagement as well. And we look forward to finding out who our new colleagues are and meeting them. So, is there any other?
Yes.
Commissioner?
I'm going to ask Ms. Freino to come up. As you all know, there are some pending litigation, some court filings regarding the school choice cases in four districts, and I think we have some news or at least an update for you all with that regard. So Lori, if you would fill us in.
Sure. Will do. And I'll give you, Lori Freino, Department of Education, I'll give you a summary, and if anyone has any questions or wants me to give them more specific information, I'd be happy to. After this Board found that Hope, Lafayette County, Junction City, and Camden Fairview had to participate in school choice, the lawyers for the school districts, it's the same lawyer representing all the different school districts filed a motion. And in summary, what that motion is asking for is for the Court to, one, hold that the School Choice Act of 2015 is amended in 2017 was, is unconstitutional. And two, that the consent decrees actually do prohibit school choice. And if they don't, that the Court should revise them to require that they prohibit school choice. So those motions have been filed. The plaintiffs in the case, who are represented by the same lawyer, a different lawyer, but, you know, all of them are same lawyer, they filed what we call Me Too briefs. They just said, oh, we agree with the school districts. So now what's happening is today, the Attorney General's Office is representing us. They're going to be filing a response in the Camden Fairview case. Now, that's a case we actually were a party in at some point. The State Board was and the official capacity Board members. So that one, we have to file a response in. The other three cases, we never were a party. The state was never involved in those. So we have to file for what's called intervener status. We have to try to intervene in order to let the Court get in and have our say. And considering the fact that they're challenging the constitutionality of a state law, it's almost certain that the Court will allow them to intervene and defend the constitutionality of that. And then they will just, you know, defend us in all aspects of the case as well. So the response is being filed today in Camden Fairview. There is an intervention motion being filed in the Hope case today. And then next week, in the other two, Junction City and Lafayette County, the AG will be moving to intervene on our behalf.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I mean, first of all, I have a comment, which is, one of the things we've asked these districts to do from the beginning is get a clarification from the federal court so that we weren't in the process of intervening or interpreting or anything. We were just saying, well, tell, have the federal court give us some clear information. So it's, I'm glad they're doing that, but it's interesting that they went even further. But I was wondering on the families who will be impacted in those districts, and you can correct me, I'm not an attorney, but is it America's brief that you could, or if that's the correct pronunciation, file that, let, have those parents say, you know, we support the defendant's position in this because, you know, but for the fact of where we live, we are having no choices. Maybe we don't have any charters, maybe we don't have the money for private, it's not possible for us to homeschool, but we don't feel our children are getting the education in this district. Most of the children in those districts probably are getting a good education, but some, for whatever reason, maybe the parent works in a different town, maybe they teach in a different town, I don't know. But I know that sometimes when there are court cases going on, those kind of things are filed in support of, not to become a party to. Is that something that can be done in this or would those people have to come to you all and say, I want to do that? Or is that something a Chamber of Commerce or Economic Development in that town or whatever?
It is not some, it's called an amicus brief. And that's not something that they would have to come to us for permission to file. You know, anybody can file, they can ask the Court for leave to file an amicus brief. And I know there's been some discussion about that already. I don't know where the parents are on that. But, you know, and the parents also could move to intervene, just like we're doing. They could move to intervene. But there is a possibility of filing an amicus brief, which is like a friend of the Court brief, and it's, you know, just saying to the Court, hey, we want to give you our perspective of this as well. But they do not have to come to us for permission. They have to look to the Court for permission to file.
Okay. And I think the reason that I'm thinking in this regard, I know that as a result of the Economic Developers and the chambers in Texarkana, becoming aware that Texarkana was not allowing school choice, that the business community, the parents, everybody got together, and then Texarkana decided, well, you know, maybe this wasn't just a superintendent or a couple of Board members that could make this decision, we need to talk with the whole community. So, and I think that same lawyer represented them at the time as well. But I just think that if we're doing community engagement and we're wanting stakeholders involved, which we do, and parents involved and teachers and the whole community, then those kind of decisions should be a whole community decision, not just five or six people who happen to be involved in the school.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Freino.
Thank you.
And then finally, expect to hear, obviously, about a timing of a special meeting or is that?
Yeah, no update this morning.
And so that, that could happen. We hope it will happen before the end of the month. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. I'll ask Ms. Reif to make the motion.
Oh, I moved to adjourn.
And I'll ask Mr. Black to second the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you all again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Oh, yeah, you still got one meeting.
But, no, but still, it'll be the last reporting.